School. For those of you who are at home watching it, you can go to visit rps.org, district information, school board and board book, and you can follow along and see all the information that us board members have. Board members, please make sure all your cell phones are shut off and we all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Stacy will not be here tonight and either will Matt. So Brandy, roll call.
Here.
John?
Here.
Bill?
Here.
Tom?
Here.
Polly?
Here.
Nicole is here, she's in a meeting for a school project, so Nicole will be stepping the meeting a little bit later and I am here, so. We're looking for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Support by John, support by Tom, is there any discussion? I have one item that should be taken out under the consent agenda, 4.5. That was inadvertently put in or on this, that is not in the contracts, the new contract, so we're just gonna pull it.
So Bowles, PL.
Yeah, yeah, with the new contract, they don't have the coordinators, so, and that's one reason.
Says it was for the 21, 22 school year, which is over.
Hmm, good catch.
Yeah.
That might have been a typo, I was told to pull it, so. And then the only other thing I would like to add to the consent agenda under 4.43 is Minnesota Power has made a donation of two Level 2 electric vehicle chargers and they will pay for installation up to $1,500. And in addition to the charger, the chargers, they'll have one pedestal, so the total donation is $7,500. I'd like to put that on the consent agenda, 4.43.
Was that, were those?
This is add, yeah.
For discussion and approval?
Is that just a regular agenda item?
No, this is an add, add to the consent.
I know, but I saw that we had something in our packet, I just didn't know if it was to be discussed.
We got it emailed to us on Friday, I think.
I didn't get one.
And on 4.7, you have the Cindy.
Shouldn't we do the whole agenda, then do the consent?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I wanted to give the update on, so I have a motion by John, second by Tom to approve the agenda, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. We have to, we have the addition of the Minnesota Power.
Recognition of visitors and visitor.
There was no visitors that contacted me this week.
I did actually, I sent, it wasn't within the 20-hour timeframe, but I sent it through an email, actually, like through the regular form.
I never received anything.
Okay, because it said it was submitted. It was regarding the work agenda.
I did not receive any.
I haven't.
So.
I received nothing as well.
Can I ask Commissioner Speaker?
No, I apologize, but not at this time.
Was it an agenda item, Catherine?
No, it was just regarding the school campus, regarding the unit that's in the.
So will the board allow 4.8 for Minnesota Power donation?
I'd like it to be a separate item because I have a few questions about it.
That's fine, then we will move it.
Put it on the other end there.
I'll put it under admin and, let's see.
And then I'd like to discuss 4.8, 9 and 10.
Second here. 4.8.
9, 10 and 40. And, let's see, and 37.
What's that number, Polly?
8, 9, 10, 37 and 40.
And we'll do those right after we approve the consent agenda in that order. Minnesota Power will go at 6.3, Noel's. Favorable with everyone? Yep.
I'd like to have a little discussion on, somewhere along the line in this, maybe 6.14, just about the Gilbert campus and how I've been notified by a lot of Facebook people about, you know, the closing ceremony we had was on a weekday at night, and I want to see the feasibility of opening it up over the 2nd and 3rd of July for those alum that are coming back to Gilbert for the 3rd of July festivities. I don't know the logistics of how that would work.
Put it, put it under 6.14. Noel can answer questions on that.
Addition. We're just gonna put it on there. I move we add that to the agenda.
We have a motion by Polly to.
I support that.
Add Minnesota Power in Gilbert, second by John, all those in favor sign the aye by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Okay, we will be voting on the consent agenda. My, we won't be voting on 4.8, 4.9, 10, 437 and 440. All those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ooh, I apologize, I don't even have a motion for it.
I will make that motion.
Thank you.
Okay, one, one, yeah, when we get into the discussion.
Okay, we have Brandy making a motion.
Worked.
Support by Tom for the consent agenda, all those in favor signify.
Want a little discussion on this, on this 4.7, Cindy Cugela was part of the approving the hires, but yet she resigned. Acceptance of resignation, 4.39, is that the same person? 4.39.
4.39.
And then, yeah, okay.
Say that again, Bill, I didn't hear that.
So 4.7.
Consent agenda.
Approve the pair of educators for the extended school year.
Right.
Okay, and Cindy.
Cugela.
Cugela is listed, but yet 4.39 says.
I think this is for the summer, just.
This is for the summer.
This is, the approval of 4.7 is for the summer and she is resigning for the next school year, 2022, 2023.
Okay, all right.
On that same topic, just a clarification, in parentheses, we've got a bunch of asterisks and it says hired through student's home healthcare company, are those the ones asterisked? And what does that mean? That we're not hiring them, but they're being hired through the home healthcare company of the student? I mean, I just, I wondered that too, but.
Answer that. Hey Noel? Can you answer one question before you?
Yep, hold on.
Yep, yep, yep.
What was your question?
Polly has a question about the asterisks, oh, go ahead Polly, you ask.
Yep, and Cindy Cugela, I don't understand that one you said either. Say that one again, Bill.
She's listed at 4.7.
Right.
But that 4.7 has to do with the extended school year through the summer and her resignation is for next school year.
No, we're talking about the.
Not returning.
We're talking about how they're getting paid, right? You said something?
No, Polly said something about the asterisks.
Right.
Accepted additional hours to ride the bus. This will be approximately 1.5 to 2 hours daily. So their work schedule.
Said hired through student's home healthcare, healthcare company, I didn't know what that meant.
And where, what item are you?
It's on the last sentence, kind of, sort of.
It's 4.7, it's still the same one, 4.7. Just a clarification, I just, I don't know what that means.
It means that we don't have the services to provide and there's an individual who does provide the services and the parents want that services to be provided that way and it works out for everyone. So it is a special contract, but the district does, you pay for it, but we use a surrender agreement for it.
So those are the asterisked ones?
No.
That is that specific one you're asking me about, the student's home healthcare company.
So what does the asterisk stand for and all those?
The asterisk is a pair that when school is, the summer school session is done, they ride home on a bus or in a, in a suburban with the student because the student can't be left alone and they, when they drop them off, then they come back and that's when their day is done.
And then the ones who don't have an asterisk, what, they don't ride the bus or what?
I would assume those ones that they don't need to be on a bus with a student.
I'm gonna have to find out more information on that for the board, so if you want to wait, you can, and I'll come back with more information at your next school board meeting because it is confusing the way it is listed here.
Okay, and then you said special contract and we only get reimbursed part of it and it'd be kind of be nice to know what we pay for, what we don't, the ones we totally cover and portion we get reimbursed for.
I would assume that we.
Information on that topic.
But I'd assume that's something that we have to provide for that student.
Something you legally have to provide because it's EGNIEP.
So is the board comfortable on passing this, they start tomorrow?
Yeah, that's.
Yes, comfortable passing it.
Yeah.
Good discussion, any other on the consent? We have a motion by Brandy, second by Tom, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried, thank you. So now we are going to look at.
Just back up for one second. Who made the motion to approve the agenda, being Stacy's not here today?
That was me.
Okay, so.
John and Tom.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm taking notes too.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
So.
Do we need a discussion on 4.8?
4.8, Polly, what would you like to know?
Okay, that's school counselor position, I'm just gonna turn this off, I thought I did turn it off, sorry. Okay, school counselor position, and then it says transfer elicitable, she not an English teacher at this point in time?
Yes, members of the board, she is an English teacher at this time, she did apply for the position, she's currently working on her counseling license, she's not ultimately done, but in Minnesota, there's a way you can hire her and she will work her way and finish the license, I believe, about the middle of the year, and we are suggesting that she would fill Pillsbury's spot in the district, and so then she would move into a regular counseling position. So her specific position we're recommending is not one of the three SR-funded special counseling positions. Yeah, she is an English teacher right now, so if this happens, then we would be looking for another English teacher.
Well, now with this English teacher on number 10, Benjamin Norman, that teacher to replace Alyssa Bowles?
No, this is another individual, this was as a result of the actions the board took at the end of May, you made some decisions which allowed us to hire some teachers, and so the science teacher, the English teacher, those are as a result of us being able to hire back some teachers to keep class sizes low. And also there's another one on here that you also, number nine, the STEAM, that was also another one that we were able to bring back. So we're recommending those three positions, that's the direct result of what the board did at the end of May, hiring those three TEAs for those positions. Alyssa Bowles is different, we are recommending her hire to replace those who has resigned.
Okay, did we, did we have any candidates that already had their school counselor license for that position?
What was that again?
Did we have any applicants that already had their school counselor license for that position?
You did have, no.
No.
But one thing to keep in mind with the board is that even if we do have people with the licensure, have it, we are not obligated to hire them, you are not obligated to hire them because we can consider other details, we do have to look at it, yes. In this case, we did not get very many applicants, the principals, however, were happy with the applicants they received, they thought we have some high-quality people and so, and Alyssa, she did well in the interview, we know her and we believe she can do an incredible job in the position.
But you did have licensed school counselors. How many, more than one?
We had a couple.
Okay, and Brandy, you probably know the answer to this because I don't, do you have to have a master's degree to be a school counselor? Okay, so is she working on her bachelor's or her master's?
She's working on her master's.
Her bachelor's or master's?
Master's.
He said bachelor's, you said master's.
No, I said masters.
Oh, okay, okay. To me, it's now leaves another, it leaves a hole. If Benjamin Norman isn't replacing Alyssa, then we have a hole for Alyssa.
Correct, so we will then, the principals will then, if you approve these hires, then the principals will look for an English teacher.
Would it be easier if you just kept her and looked for, and took a school counselor, reposted for a school counselor, doesn't have her credentials yet?
She does not, but this is the recommendation of the interviewing team.
Interviewed.
To hire her and then we'll backfill with an English teacher.
I know it might be a recommendation, but without understanding the rationale, when we have fully licensed people that applied and more than one, you know, I, I'm not comfortable without knowing the details and the reason why she's considered the best candidate over somebody licensed.
I've talked to the principals who were at the interview, they told me she was the best candidate and they're very comfortable recommending to the board and it's your call as far as what you think.
All right, I'd be against that one, and then nine, first of all, when you say transfer, don't we have the right of assignment instead of a transfer? Why is it called a transfer?
Whether the word is transfer or reassign, it's the same thing.
So we don't usually vote on assignments like this?
But this is a hire and so, but this is someone who's already in the district, so we're recommending this person be moved into the position. Whether it's assignment, transfer, it's the same thing. There's a woman's position, this individual applied for and the interview team said she is the best person for the position.
Our kids are going through a lot of transitions in the next couple of years and I believe that Alyssa knows our students, we've worked with them in various, various different capacities and I, and, you know, we need, my personal feeling is, is if we want people to participate in these committees, we should also take their recommendations, they are the ones that work side by side with these people, they also know what their, their, you know, resume says, so I, I trust that they're making the decision.
Oh, I disagree.
You disagree.
Approve the transfer, Carleen, again, that's a transfer, was she full-time special ed for us? I have no problem that, you know, she was full-time, but now you're recommending, is she replacing for the STEAM?
Right, what I'm trying to do is, I'm deliberately probably over-communicating some information with you so you know what's going on, and so she is a teacher we have, there was an open position, she applied for it, the interview team said she's the one for the position, so I'm bringing her view, over-communicating, perhaps my fault, to let you know that this is who we're recommending for the position.
I don't think you're over-communicating at all, I think these are the things that board members need to know, we're the ones responsible for the hiring and the, and the assignments and everything.
Okay, can we move on Polly to the next one?
No, I'm not done yet, so if she was full-time special ed, now are we short a halftime? Because now you're only assigning her halftime special ed?
Depending what the school board decides here tonight, then we'll take a look at the special ed position next.
So this action will, half-a-time special ed services, and we don't know if we still need those or not, but we're removing half-time.
We believe we can fill that position and get those kids covered.
Okay, and so you are intending to fill that halftime special ed?
We believe we can fill it the way we currently have it set up, yes.
Okay, and then number 10, when it says that Benjamin Norman is pending his master's degree and licensure approval, did we have any fully qualified tiered English teachers that applied and why would we, we do this pending approval by MDE?
This is very normal, this is a person who we're waiting from another state, wants to work with us, and so there's always a process where they have to apply for a licensure, we're very confident they're gonna, this individual will get the licensure, but we must say, it's dependent upon them getting the licensure, we believe this individual, it's not gonna be an issue, but we need to say it, it's kind of normal for people to come out of state.
We still have a couple of months to look for somebody in this position that might be a better fit or is fully licensed.
But the one thing Polly is, is Noel, each time you've had a question on it, they can't go forward to the next step until we approve these hires, then they can go ahead and do the next step.
I just think we should have a full picture and instead of just saying, you know, let's do it, what effect does it have? I always ask, are we refilling these positions or not? Is that leaving a hole, is that leaving higher class size? I think important decisions take and we need that information, okay, those are my, so for number eight, I move that we, number eight, and we not approve number 10.
4.37. Your questions are Polly?
Oh yeah, I forgot that one, 37, I think you answered that Noel, Charles Pillsbury, that would be the relationship to Alyssa Bowles, okay, so you, you just answered that one.
40.
And what's the, I see Marie Johnson has worked for us for the last several years and we've had some special, you know, they keep changing the, the title of, community expert, experimental, special, whatever. We've had her for the last few years, but now we are not renewing her because of lack of licensure, we did get a, an okay, a special blessing, so to speak, I can't think of the right word, from the state, so why is there a problem with the licensure this year?
There's a limit to how long you can have these provisional licenses and the state of Minnesota does require us to have these licenses and so we have to and we're out of time with this particular employee, so that's why it has to come before the board.
I think I checked and they can have five years, five lifetime of these special permissions and the year 20 and 21 does not count because of COVID, so she still has, has years of So she still has, has years of, of these exceptions.
I will double-check for you, but I do not believe that is true. And what happens is, the state of Minnesota will flag every employee who does not have the licensure, and you may actually report saying that you have non-licensed people. So that's why we need to take it to the board.
I don't have it here, but I did pull up her license today, and that's the information I saw. So I'd like you to double-check, check that. And otherwise, was it something about maybe an evaluation, or we are looking for some different, or what the reason that this, there's a problem this year and there weren't the other years? Because she does?
Has nothing to do with that.
Good.
This person's subject.
Okay. And if she does have the license and is interested in the position, I'd like to pull this one until you get that information.
It's your call.
So I would, well, let's go to the other ones first.
Okay, I'm looking, discussion on those. I'm looking for a motion on 4.8, 4.9, 4.10, 4.37, and 4.40.
And I already forwarded a motion to not approve eight.
Paul, what we're going to do is ask for a motion on these, and then you can, you can vote against them.
No, I already did. I'm making a motion.
Need a motion.
Making a motion. I might not get support, Tim, but I make the motion.
Motion for four.
For eight, 10.
She, she keeps adding to it, so I, you know, I'm.
10 and 40. Yeah, 8, 10, and 40. And approve the other ones. Approve nine and 30.
So we have, we have a motion not to accept 4.8, 4.10, 4.40. Motion by Polly, is it seconded? Is there a second? With no second, the motion dies. I'm looking for a motion for.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Brandy. 4.8, 4.9, 4.10, 4.37, 4.40.
Correct.
Motion by Brandy.
I'd support that.
Second by John. Is there any discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Six, one with Polly and, no. Thank you very much. Okay, now I gotta figure out where we're at here. Yeah. Administration, consider approval, quote for new Rock Ridge wrestling mats, wall pads, underpads, and miscellaneous costs.
To the board, I'm going to briefly introduce Dennis Benz, who I've asked to be here. We do have some mats that need replacing. We do need mats. It will come, I think, in reconstruction, but this is a dollar item that you need to know about, and you need to approve. Because wrestling mats, there's different mats and complexities. I've asked Dennis to come up here and just give you an on what the request for wrestling mats are, that you can ask him directly. Any questions about the, Dennis, would you want to address the board?
Any particular spot you want me, or?
Just so the camera can see you.
First of all, thank you for having me. Noel and myself and my assistant, we've been working with Deck and stuff about the new wrestling room, which is actually going to be in this building, which I'm sure all of you are aware of that. So I'm going to try to be brief. I think I've given to you about some of the information. I know that the bidding process goes on, and most of the time you have to have three people. Well, there's only, there's three vendors. There's only two vendors actually in the United States that actually make wrestling mats. One is Wrestle Lite, and one is Dollamir. And they both are very, because as this was going on, they kept kind of like saying, hey, I can underbid him, and I can do this, and I can do that. And I tried to stay away from that, and I just said, you, I mean, not getting in that little avenue to fight with you or anything like that. So here's what we have going on. We know that there's budget restraint, and we know that. You know, and I, I've been in your position in, in my past job. I don't know about, you know, what, what we got to do to kind of cut corners. But I do want you to know one thing. When it comes to safety, I'm not cutting any corners. Okay, the kids, obviously, safety is the number one thing for me, and I want to make sure that we have basically a good danger of us, you know, don't get hurt. So as you all know, you probably know that there's going to be a new lift installed in the gym, one of the gyms, somewhere in the corner, I imagine, or whatever. That lift will lift 3,840 pounds of wrestling mat. So not in your notes, I don't believe it's in there, is the weight of these mats. So let's start out with the company Wrestle Lite. Very good company, and sold dolls. They're very competitive, they're, wrestling mats are basically made kind of the same way. I knew this day would come where I'd be able to come and give you guys a presentation and, and talk to you about what kind of mat we want. So Garrett and I, that's my assistant, my son also, when we've been traveling around and going to wrestling meets and stuff, we've been talking and chatting with other coaches, and we've been visiting wrestling rooms when we go to the school, and we just want to see what they have, what works, what's great, you know, what's the best thing? What is the kind of equipment that you're using that eliminates a lot of injuries and things like that? So as we all know, this is a cement floor, and we, when we sat down with the architect, actually Noel and Garrett, and the architects sat down, we know that, you know, there's a possibility of putting carpet, but carpet doesn't do us any good as far as any type of cushion. I mean, it's right on the floor, and it's harder to keep clean. So we've been in the multipurpose room, for you people that don't know where we have been, we've been down in kind of like a dungeon, and we're really excited to get a, a new room, a new facility, and, and a kind of our own room, because what we were doing is, we would roll our mats up every night and stuff, so that room could also be used for the FIET classes and stuff. And we didn't have a problem with that. It is what it is. Everybody needs to get along and stuff like that. But we are really excited. So we've decided not to have any carpet put down. We're just going to go with the floor. However, these wrestling mats, okay, let's back up a little bit. So what I've done is, with Noel and everybody we've talked about, we have two wrestling mats right now, but they're Virginia Blue Devil wrestling mats, of course. Okay, and we've decided that we're going to take those wrestling mats, and we're going to use those in our wrestling room. Because it really doesn't matter what the mat say, or what they look like, or whatever, because it's our wrestling room. It's a practice room. We're not ever going to hold a meet there, you know, we're not really representing the new Rock Ridge or whatever. So we're going to take those mats and we're going to move them over there. But these mats are only like an inch and a half thick. So in your notes, you'll notice that some of the bids were for an undermat, and it's just basically like a little thicker, like a carpet mat, but it's a little thicker. Now, we've been visiting, like I said, other wrestling rooms, and we've talked to other wrestling coaches, and they've, over the years now, have started putting that underneath their wrestling mats because it eliminates a ton of injuries. They've seen injuries go down as much as 75 to 95%. And these, these were talking about, you know, when kids are wrestling, and they get a little aggressive, and they throw somebody on their back or whatever, and they found that their injuries have went way down. So one thing that we need to get, we need to have that pad. And in the bid, and I'll talk about the money thing here in a minute, is, is that pad. Now, what we like to do is, Wrestle Lite gives us one, they give us some options that Dollamir doesn't. And between you and I, I'll give you a recommendation. I think we need to work with both of them. We can get this from this one, we can get this one from this one. And it's all about money. We know that, and I'll tell you what I've come up with in just a minute. So what we're proposing is that, to make it right, to do it the right the first time, and for the safety of the kids, obviously, we need a mat underneath that mat. We're asking for two wrestling mats that will go into the new gym. They will stay in the gym. They won't move from the gym. Those mats, as far as longevity goes and stuff, could be 40, 50 years. What we're experiencing right now with the stuff, the way we have it, and we're in our old wrestling room, and we got to roll them up and that, then we got some kids that come in there, and they pick at them and stuff, and, you know, they're expensive. And we try to do our best to kind of, you know, hide them, and we were able to hide one mat up in the gym, but there was no more storage space. All the rest of them had to be downstairs. And underneath, in the multipurpose room, which they have carpet in that, we used to have these old mats that were, they're heavy. I mean, they're heavy, they're big. It's something a school district can probably maybe try to get rid of and get a little money, but I noticed all their other schools are getting rid of them, and they're having a hard time. So they're really good for nothing. We can't put them underneath these mats because it's just not going to work. So what I'm proposing today, if you looked at, at the, at the specs I gave you, these wrestling mats, is we need a couple of things. Obviously, we need two wrestling mats, right? And we need the underlayment on the one. And the architect now contacted me last week, I think it was last week, or the week before, and asked me to get an estimate for wall pads. Now, wall pads are pads that obviously go on the wall in case a kid throws a kid into the wall. And anything, any space that you have, like, if we did away with the wall mats, we would have to have our mat five feet from the wall, minimum. That's, that's a code thing. So they put the wall mats on, so then we can put the wall, the mats right against the wall. So I got an estimate for some wall mats from both places, and we'll talk about those a little. We're going to use the old wall mats, or in the old wrestling room, and we're going to take, and it would have been a new one, but we're 175 feet short. So the wall mats that we're going to buy are going to be just 175 feet. We're going to take the old ones and use them. So what we're doing here is, we're using the old mats for the wrestling room, we're using all the old wall pads for the wrestling room, and there's, I think there's, we asked for a TV, and they got a used TV somewhere, and we're not asking for much, and they're going to do that and some floor parts and things like that. So we're taking all the stuff we can and bringing it over here. Lockers from the old locker room, bringing them over here. I'm fine with that, because we're going to have our own locker room, obviously, over here. The benches, we're going to bring them over here. So we're using as much stuff from the old school to bring over here that we can save money. So my recommendation on the mats, Wrestle Lite makes a one-piece mat, and they also make a seven-piece mat. So what I mean by that is, each mat is 42 feet by 42 feet. All right? The seven-piece mat, obviously, is six-foot sections, and they roll on 42 feet. Now, there's different ways you can hook them together, and one way is, you can use mat tape, all right? Another way, they come and they have a Velcro, like a tenor shoot, you can Velcro. Another way they come is you can use a zipper on them, they, just like a zipper, you kind of snap them together all the way down. So that's the three ways they come. If we chose to buy the zipper or buy the Velcro, it's like $1,800 more. The mat. Well, the two mats that we have right now, they have Velcro. And the thing about when we're finished wrestling, we obviously have to take these mats down. We've experienced, because kids are excited, they want to go home, they're not real careful, and we've got some damage from them ripping them up. So to save money, I've elected not to go with the zipper or the Velcro, and just keep the straight mat. And onto my budget, which is like $1,500 a year, I'll buy the mat tape to put in the mats, and you have to, you can't reuse it. Once you use it, you pull it up, the stickiness is gone, so you can't reuse it, so we got to throw it away. It's not extremely expensive, but it isn't really cheap either. So they usually come in, I think it's 100-foot roll or something like that. Regular tape that you'd use, kind of like packaging tape, but it's maybe a little strong. So to save the, the money, I elected to go that way. The one-piece mat, the reason why we like to go with that is, more and more schools are using it because it's safer, you know, as far as, we can roll it up, and the lift that we have, it's going to have, one can go on the bottom, and one can go on the top. Now, I would have liked to have two of those, to be honest with you, but the lift capacity will not allow us to have two of those mats. That mat weighs 2,200 pounds roughly. A regular seven-piece mat weighs about 1,000 pounds. So we're, we're talking, you know, 30, 200, 30, 300 pounds. The lift can lift, once again, 38, 40. So we're way under, so we're good. And the, the seven-piece mat would then go butt-to-butt on top of the other one. What's going on out there is, you know, you, you used to be able to get by with one mat, like a one wrestling mat, but what's happening is that we're having triangulators and quads and things like that going on, where we have four teams, three teams come, and we got to have two mats, we have a competition. Otherwise, we're going to be there all night. And if we don't have two mats, schools are, you know, they, they know that, and they're not going to come up here and wrestle and wait, and then you have to travel home, and then the kid's got to go to school. So that is the reason why it would be nice to have two brand-new mats that signify the Rock Ridge emblem. Now, if you look in your notes, I do, I do believe you supplied that, didn't you? Pictures of the mats. Okay, so Oliver, for example, their mat will look like this if we purchase it from them. This is the mat here that they have, which is a very nice mat, and I think it's pretty attractive. I mean, it's, it's nice to have a couple, you know, looks on the mat. So this is the one that we would, and we worked with him, and kind of came up with this. And then the other one is a little more, I guess, if you want to call it flamboyant, I kind of like this one too, is the one from Wrestle Lite, the one-piece would look like Okay, so this is kind of nice, too. And like I said before, they're 42 by 42. So this would be a one-piece mat. Now, let's start talking about money. So fairly, they're, they're fairly close on their prices. However, Dollamir can't give us a one-piece mat, only Wrestle Lite can. And don't ask me how, why, or, you know, I, I don't know. I really don't know why Dollamir doesn't do a one-piece. Dollamir goes around and does a lot of tournaments and stuff, you know, and you can buy mats from them for maybe a reduced cost if you let them use them at a tournament. Dollamir's quote on their mat is for a two-inch mat, which is really nice. Like I said before, our mats that we have now that came from Dollamir are inch and a half, and we elected to go that way because we were trying to save some money. Well, the two-inch mat, we ended up getting a little cheaper because there's a sale going on because they're running this big tournament out in Fargo. If you buy a mat, they're not using our mat out there, but if you buy it, they have this incentive going on, which is save about 800 bucks. So we kind of got into this at, at a good time. So what I recommend is using both companies. We'll buy a one-piece mat from Wrestle Lite, and the cost of that one-piece mat is $20,347. Okay? The other mat, Dollamir, that two-inch, seven-piece mat, and you guys probably don't have this because I asked him to send me an updated, so he gave you a price, the one you got there from Dollamir is actually for two mats. One mat, so the two mats, was it 22-something there? 22, they, they had a price on there, it was for two mats, right? That's the one you gave them. He didn't have this, but he sent it to me. So one mat from Dollamir, the seven-piece, be $11,320. Okay, that's the two-inch, seven-piece mat. Hitting back to money. I think we buy the one mat, like I said, from Dollamir. I think we buy the other mat from Wrestle Lite. I think we buy the underlayment because they're cheaper from Wrestle Lite than it is from Dollamir, and I'm sure there's not much difference for $9,240. That's for the underlayment, $9,240. And I think we buy the wall pads from Dollamir because they're $5,500 compared to, I think he was, and that, you guys should have that, he was a lot more money. I mean, he was like 13. He was up there in 13,000. He was up there in 13,000, uh, something like that. Hang on a minute, I got it right. He, he was, uh, the wall pads are 5,500 at 16.
At 11,500?
Yeah. The one-piece mat and the underlayment would come from Wrestle Lite for a total of $29,587. Underlayment, one-piece mat from Wrestle Lite, $29,587. The mat from Dollmer and the wall pads, mat and the wall pads would come to $16,820 for a grand total of $46,407. So what we're getting for $46,407, wrestling mats, one being a one-piece, one being a seven-piece, we're getting all the underlayment and we're getting the wall pads. That is the best bang for our buck. Both places, shopping in both spots, going back and forth, looking at the, the, the dollar value of them all, that, that's where I think we need to be, and that's the cheapest way we can go. If we went with, there's another way I was looking at it, but it would be more money, it'd be almost $50,517, so I, I firmly believe that the 46, 407, that's a concrete number, that's a solid number, will give us everything we need. And like I said, the longevity of the mats is going to be tremendous. We're, we're not going to have to replace these things for 40, 50 years. Because they're going to be in the gym, and nobody's going to have an opportunity to pick on them, jump on them, um, hide in them, do whatever they do down there, because we, I put gum on them, I mean, it's crazy. So, I think, you know, if we're going to do it, let's do it the right way. It's, uh, it's the safe thing for the kids. We're, we're going to hopefully cut down on injuries and stuff by putting underlayment in. And we might as well, if, if, you know, upon your approval, and I'll answer any questions here, I think, I think it's a very reasonable number. No, there, there's, um, other ways we could go, but I think it would cost a lot.
So you're saying the total would be 46?
46, 407. 46, 407.
Hey, before you go any further, I got to tell you, what are the uniforms, what are they called? I just stopped.
Singlets?
Singlets. When Dennis bought the singlets for Rock Ridge, he did a little research and came back and went to Josh and he managed to save, what was it, Noel, almost 800 bucks?
It was a lot of money.
It was a lot of money. I mean, he was, he has, he has researched this and researched this. I'm, I, I trust you totally.
So what happened with the uniforms, just quickly, as long as Tom brought it up, is, um, apparently, we have some kind of contract with Under Armour. And, and I didn't know what that consisted of, didn't know we had or anything, but there is like three, four different places you can get these singlets from. And the nicest one out there that most of them, all the athletes are wearing, is this one, uh, come on a company called Rudis. So I was working with them, and we were trying to get a design and everything, and we approved it, you know, the design through Josh, and I'm sure Noel was involved somehow, or there was some committee out there too, and anyway, um, we were even willing, we were going to buy these things, once we got, everything was okay, we'd buy them through the club if we had to, because I was using uniforms for singlets since nineteen, from 1998. I mean, that's how bad it was. Anything that, you hold them up and you could see through them, and I'm like, that's not a good thing. So, so anyway, what happened was is, I was working with the Rudis thing, and then we ended up getting Under Armour, was kind of like a, a tag-in, so I did a thread on them, included them, because we had to do that. And, um, I told the woman at Rudis, I said, here's the deal, I said, just between you and I, I want to see what it's going to cost me from your inventory. And you send it over to, over to Under Armour, because what she did was, when they were done, she had to send them to him. Now, this is a box about this big. They, I mean, it, it didn't weigh much, and, because there, there's not much to them, to be honest with you. And, um, they got the box, she sent me an invoice, I waited and I waited and I waited, and pretty soon, the athletic department sends me an email and says, hey, do I have to pay this? I said, yeah, well, now I got the number, and I figured it out, and it was, hey, all they did, honest to God, this is no, no kidding, all they did was, they didn't even open the box. They didn't even look inside. Under Armour didn't. They took an ma, uh, address label, because they still had the Rudis tape on the box. So I know they didn't look at them, they took an address label, put it over theirs and shipped it to me, and charged the school, or they, well, the school district getting it up, it was like 1,800 bucks. More than, than what we would have paid for Rudis. So then I went and notified Tom and said, I don't think this is correct, I mean, this ain't right. And then they worked with them, Noel and Tom, and I'm sure you guys were well aware. Then I, I think we saved 900, I think they gave you back 7, 8, 900 bucks.
Somewhere around there.
Which, in my opinion, was still too much. I can see 10%, you know, we're the business, construction business now. 10, 15%? Yeah, you can see that. That's kind of what happened. I kind of like watch that stuff, you know, and, because I don't think that, you know, that's not right, but. So, um, another thing we've done is, we, we got new singlets now, you know, thank you guys for doing that for us too. Uh, we ended up, through the club then, we bought the rest of the warm-up gear ourselves through the club this year. We bought the shorts and the t-shirts and everything through the club, because you guys bought us the singlets, we're very grateful for that. And so we, we went out and people were extremely generous out in the community, and they, they, they gave us some money, and, not that we begged for it, they actually came and told us, just like the other day, somebody come and said, you ever need any money when you're doing your wrestling room, and you want to put posters up or whatever you need, just let us know. And I said, yeah, I'll do that, you know, I appreciate that. And most of these people that are like that, and some of you I know personally, um, most of these people that are like that, um, they have kids that were in the program, or they still have kids that are in the program, or they have grandkids. And I've been doing this now 38 years, this will be my 39th coming up, and how much longer? I don't know. It's been fun, it's a great ride, I want to see this transition go through, I'm excited about this whole thing, it's a super-duper deal. Um, I was actually really excited when I met with Noel here the other day and brought him the paperwork up. I didn't realize the school was down here, because I just stay away from here. I thought the high school was going to be up on a hill, when we first learned that our wrestling room was going to be here. I'm like, ah, who cares, that's block and a half, then kids can run over there. Well, I get here and I'm like, jeez, we're just across the gym, that's super, you know? So we can go over there, like Noel said, and, I mean, we're not, we, we won't even have showers here. So we'll have to go over there and shower. No, big deal, it's not a big deal. We got our own room, that's what, kids are excited, so.
Dennis, I do have one question. I, I appreciate all your, uh, all your info here that you gave tonight. The only question I have would be the ta, taping those, those panels together is, I mean, if the zippers or the Velcro, seems like a better option than having to run a strip of tape out?
To be honest with you, it really isn't. Um, here's the reason why we found out. So you know how the Velcro goes over on the other side?
Yeah.
If those kids don't get, if you don't get that right even Steven, some of that abrasiveness actually kind of goes through and you have like a little seam there. And we've, like, like I've explained a little bit, um, and I probably should have been a little more thorough in this. Uh, when we talked to the other wrestling coaches now, they're all doing them, they're, they're not ordering them like that anymore either. Um, it, it does cost a little more for the ma, mat tape, but, you know, I'll take that onto my budget and we'll eat that. And it's just, um, because you've got two pieces that are coming together and they're, and they're, you know, factory sealed and everything, so you just put them there, and that's how all the old ones used to be too.
Okay.
But, yeah, this is a good question, I mean, but, um, we thought the zipper thing actually would have been a little better, well,
That's what I would have thought.
We talked to the Aiken guys, he said, I'd never order a mat like that again, and he's been coaching for a while, he said, it's nice looking at it, because you can hardly even see it, you know, but it comes loose on the edges all the time. So they end up still having to put tape on there to hold them so they don't do this. And he says, once they start breaking, they just continue to, you know, it's just like pulling on.
Yeah.
You know, a piece of thread apart and goes like that, and then he, then he got to stop the mat, he's actually had to stop the mat, and he had to tape it then. Because, so he said he'd never buy another one.
Alright, done the research.
Yeah, I mean, a good question though.
So this tape, I mean, you put the mat together, you tape it, and then it just, the mat just stays on the ground for...
Mat stays there until we're done wrestling, yeah.
So you, it ain't like you're rolling this thing up every night?
No.
And so you're just like a one-time deal?
The two mats that I'm asking for are only going to be competition mats. That's it. We're only going to use them for competition. Right now, the ones we have, we use them for competition, practice and everything. And we are rolling those up. You know, and we leave that old one down underneath, and then the kids throw, you know. Another thing that was going on down there, the reason why I roll it up is, the kids in the weight room would flip these tires on there. And these tires are big and heavy, and then mats can't take that, and they put actually puncture holes in them. So then you got to get this, uh, this fix-it kit to try to fix that, you know, while, we talked to Matt and those guys and Evan and that, and they tried to keep those tires on the hall now. You know, down the hall in the multipurpose room, but they were flipping them on there and they were causing, so that's why we were rolling them up. And then when we rolled them up, then the kids would come in there and they'd pick at the back of them. Because it's really just a, a soft, like foam, you know? And they pick at that, and so then you go in there and all that stuff is all over the place, and of course, it's not good, it's ruining the mat.
Right.
These two mats, once they're done every time, they'll go on the lift and they'll stay up there until we use them again.
Super. Any other questions?
I have a question or two. So Dennis, if I understand it right, um, two different mats, one is a one-piece from one company?
Yep.
And wa, and the wall things, and the other will be a seven-piece, pieced one from the other company?
Yes.
Okay, now one is a two-inch, and one is a one and a quarter with a 3/8 backing, so that's going to be over a two and a half inch, they're going to have two different height mats.
They, they don't go together.
Okay, but, I know they don't, you're going to have different mats, but is that going to, is that any difference? One's going to be almost more than a half an inch higher than the other?
No, because they're, they're separate. So when, there'll be like, so if we have four teams come, and that's a good question too. Got four teams coming, we put two rolls of chairs in between them, one mat goes over here.
One's just going to have more padding?
Correct.
That's all. And whether it's safer or not, it's just going to have more padding?
It'll, it'll be fine. That, that mat, that Wrestle Lite thing is made out of a little bit different material, and actually can take your finger and kind of like, and it's got like a, um, it's, it's soft, but it's got some firmness in it where it stops, you know, whatever, and then the other one is thicker, so we won't have to put an, an underlayment underneath that.
Yeah, so the, 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 I mean, just whatever.
Yeah.
Underlayment, underlayment then has non-slip and it
Right.
Doesn't slip.
And that, and we're only going to put the underlayment in the wrestling room.
Right, okay, and just maybe a minor one. There's, uh...
And I like the designs that came up, but there are several other ones, I think they're pretty attractive and...
Right, and you can have any design that you want, really, um, but the, there's a 30-foot circle, and then there's a practice for 10, I mean, 10-foot circle and a 30-foot circle, you could put any amount of circles you want, okay, right?
Right.
If you like this.
The front is going to be like that on that one mat, and on the backside, we're only putting four circles.
Yeah.
We can actually flip that one mat over.
Okay.
It, it shows different things there, but we're going to go with the four circles, because the more I put on there, the more it costs. So I thought, you know what, we're just going to go and keep it simple, because if I use, if we have an elementary tournament, we'll flip it over, and then the little kids can each go in their own little corner, and we don't have to number the mats or take and run tape down there and keep them separate. So, I thought we'd just do that and it'd be simple and the easiest thing to do and, and, uh, less expensive.
Well, I'm glad you did all this headwork.
And this is all, uh, within the budget, Noel, this is all the, we had earmarked for this project.
I'll make a motion to buy the mats for $46,407.
House of Ford?
Motion by, by Tom, second by Bill. Is there any discussion?
How's the, uh, enrollment in the program? How are we doing for number-wise?
Well, we're up close to 30. Our last, uh, last two years were, our record's 40 and 11.
Awesome. Great.
It was in, it was in trouble for a while.
Yeah.
But, and I think, uh, being over here now, being by the high school, uh, you know, I don't get, to be honest with you, we don't get a lot of Adlith Gilbert kids. And I know they're all going to be rock, we're all at Rock Ridge now. And I'm kind of excited because the only reason we weren't getting them
Travel.
Because we have an elementary program, I mean, a ton of them.
Yeah, my son was here one year.
They don't want to drive over there.
Yeah.
You know, they go pick their kids up, and getting them over there is a problem. And that was why, when you guys were in the early stages, Garrett and I were attending your meetings and stuff, and some of you were, were not there at the time, but, um, we wanted to try to get the wrestling room into high school, while it just didn't work, and you know, and, and we're pretty easy to work with, and then they had proposed that they were going to put it over, just keep it where it was, and then bus our kids back and forth. And I said, that's not going to work. I mean, I mean, honestly, I said that, I, I just can't see that, plus the cost to the district, has anybody ever thought of that? I mean, getting those kids back over there, and I mean, that's, so, we ended up coming here, or we were thinking about even the other building, if, once you guys, what you do eventually. Um, yeah, but, um, we got here and we're satisfied, we're happy. And I, like I said earlier, I was really happy when I came here and I saw the high school there instead of way up there. That even makes it nicer, because when we're done working on here now and we want to go run, we'll just go over there and I'll tell the kids, hey, take your bag, when you're done, just go shower over there. That's all. Simple. I mean...
Perfect.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion? Is there any more discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry it unanimously.
But do you want me to work with Noel on ordering these things? Uh, how do you want?
Yes.
Done so.
Yes, he and I will talk, yeah.
Okay, alright, sounds good.
Are you going to finish your career in Virginia?
I apologize for my tired body.
Are you going to finish your career in Virginia, Dennis?
What's that?
Are you going to finish your career in Virginia? Because a trader went to Hibbing for a while.
You got to diversify. Why would you?
I only went there for like a, one day a week.
Okay.
I'll finish my career here, yeah. I'm, uh, I'm happy to be part of this, this really super. Think you guys are doing a heck of a job too.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for having me.
Report 6.1, superintendent. And you get half as, you get a third of the time then?
A third of the time. I will try to be brief members of the board. Um, the biggest thing I want to, um, inform the board and, and the audience watching is the roadmap. This is the curriculum and instruction, the Career Academy roadmap. This is a really important part of what we're doing. It's a $120 million building we're building, but it also trickles down through the elementary. So what I'm briefly going to go over is this 20-page document, so that you're aware of what's in it, and it's changing, and there's some unique features that you need to know about. And this does play directly into the strategic plan. No, we haven't forgotten about the strategic plan. Because the good news here, we have already done a lot of the strategic planning, so we don't have to be redundant um, with some of what we've done. And so this is an example of something we've already done. And I'm going to tell you where this came from and some, I'm not going to say, but I might point out some highlight, highlights to you. The overall thing is, um, education to inspire the next generation. Where did this come from? Principals, teacher leaders have worked on this two years. What you see in front of you, now not all staff have seen this, that's going to change here starting in this fall, but I want you to get the advanced preview of it. A lot of the stuff in here already came out of meetings that our kids had with the architects. So in the very first page, where, where you see the Rock Ridge vision, we didn't just make that up. That came out of meetings with the architects and the staff members and the students. So, that's where all of that came from. So it's already existed, there's no reason to redo this and to re-go over it. On the second page, there are four main areas to this document. And a couple highlights I want to point out to you is that on each one of the areas, and this is a document that Alyssa Schroder, uh, your talented curriculum coordinator who works with the teachers, is working with this. This is her baby, um, so to speak. She's the one who's working on it right now. In addition to the other folk. On every single section, there's the resources, so you can see exactly where the resources are for that one particular area. You can also see, there's one there, um, that's, it's called philosophy. That, what those listed under there, that came directly out of architect meeting with the kids and with the staff. That was not just made up by one or two people, it was a large group of people. And some of you, I believe, were present at some of these meetings. The very first big one is called career focus. We're doing a career academy, this is the heart of the high school, we want it to be career-focused. So what we've done is, we have put this into a rubric. This is a big difference than what most schools do. Most schools will say, we have a goal, we want to get from point A to point B, and we're going to do a bunch of things, and hopefully we'll get there. What we're doing and suggesting is to put it in a rubric form. So that, yes, we're going to have our final goal, this is where we want to be, but we want benchmarks along the way. So each one of these has a rubric. For example, the very first one you're starting out is called exploring. That means we're just starting. And then, once we get a little better, then it'll go into the next part called emerging. And then, once we get a little better, then it'll go into the next part called emerging. And then, once we get a little bit better, then it goes into a rubric called sustaining. And then, once we get even better than that, then it goes into extending. It's very similar to some of the rubrics that teachers are using in the classroom right now, so we can see progress along the way. This is a big difference compared to what some other schools are doing. Under each main area, like the career focus, there's a whole bunch of smaller areas. I won't go into each one in depth, but you can certainly ask me questions about anything. We want to pay attention to the academy's open sequence that the kids are going to be learning. We want to pay attention to the second one, academy systems. This includes the business people. This includes community. This includes what are the systems we're using to get to there. That also includes the curriculum part of it. And how are we going to train and develop people? We have to have a way to train and develop teachers so they know what to do under this new system. Because you've probably heard some staff members say, I'm not really sure what I should be doing differently, teaching in the career academy. But we're going to help staff get there so they know. And then, in addition to that, yes, we're going there. We do have an area. What are we going to do in the elementary school? So what we don't want to do is just all of a sudden have our kids get to be ninth graders and then, surprise, now we're going to shift everything into a career academy thinking. We don't want to do that. We don't think that's a good setup for our kids. So we need to start paying attention to some things that happen in the elementary. Don't panic. It's not everything, but we need to start doing some things so kids start thinking about that. And if you've ever worked with upper elementary or seventh and eighth grade kids, you know, we have kids who are checking out right at that age. They have already decided that school isn't worth it. They've already decided that this is not meaningful for them. They have already come to that collusion by fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth grade. We want to stop that. And we want to make sure it starts... They start seeing relevance in what they're doing before they start checking out so they get excited about what's coming up. So there's some things we need to do in the elementary schools also. We also want to pay attention to the seventh and the ninth graders. One of the things you've probably heard some teachers talk about, and we did a pilot on it, was, for example, was the meteor program. That was something we started with some sixth-grade teachers. We're going to expand it to the seventh grade and the eighth grade. And it's a way for kids to start thinking about, okay, what am I really good at doing? What do I like doing? Do I like doing hands-on kind of stuff? Do I like doing thinking kind of stuff? Am I really a people person? Do I really want to do something with people? I don't really want to work with things. I want to do the people. So you can't just expect kids to get to ninth and 10th grade and start checking this out. We want them to do it earlier. So that's part of what will come along with the seventh and eighth grade. And one of the things we're going to do is we are going to have a portrait of a graduate at the end of the senior year. Here's what kids should be able to do. A lot of schools do that. Ah, here's the fun part. We think we need one after the ninth grade year, too. Portrait of an... Up to the ninth grade. We also think we need a portrait of an elementary school kid. So by the time we get to be a sixth grade, what do our kids, should they be able to know and do? When they get to the ninth grade, what do our kids, what should they be able to do? And then, when they're seniors, what should they be able to do? So we can benchmark this all along the way so we don't lose them before they get to the high school stage. That's very unusual for these schools to do this. Then the second big one is instructional design. So career focus is a big first area. Second big area is instructional design. This is the one that keeps...
Great, yeah. You were really smart. You hired first Michelle Lufford and now Yoli Speltz at that. So we've been working with businesses behind the scenes and teachers. So we do have some legs up. The next big phase coming up is this is part of the reason why we hired Mark Winter. He is the Virginia High School principal, but he's also going to be over at the Albert Gilbert High School, bringing these two staffs together. So on the high school level, we can start doing more and pulling the commonalities together. The COVID threw us for a loop. We had to get through that. The turmoil in the high school principals didn't help. So, but I feel fairly confident that we have to have, because right now I know our teachers are going, what's next? When are we going to do this? Fair question. So this fall, we have to start boring into the curriculum part of it much more intensely.
The other question I have, Noel mentioned, this one opens here in, in the fall. We have makerspace, new types of makerspace labs. Do we have stuff developed for that? Do you have specialists that are going to work that? And that's just right on the corner. So that was brought up here as well. Are we going to, what do you have planned for the fall?
I'm glad you noticed that and picked up on this because this is a big change to the elementary curriculum. The whole Curri Academy, the 21st Century stuff, the hands-on learning, that is exactly why the makerspace is showing up. We are buying a bunch of kits for makerspaces. We are creating as part of the elementary specialist rotation, we're calling it SKE. So our kids have experience with that and they can start getting acquainted for that because we all know, and that's why they just finished one, two, three days of SMART training for the kids movement. Maxine Perkel, the local, our local girl on the SMART training. She is really good, by the way, on this SMART training. I don't know if people really understand how good this woman is. So if you're watching, kudos to you. You're fantastic. But we do want to bring this in here, this so that our kids, elementary kids, are not sitting on their butts six hours a day and then going to five for 30 minutes. We want them moving around. We want them investigating, putting kits together, building robotics and stuff like that. Because we all know the reality is that a lot of our kids are going to find work doing stuff like that. And so we need to not wait. This is one of the ones where we don't want to wait. Need to get them late earlier so they don't check out on this.
So you have a plan?
So will this be implemented in, at Franklin too, for the Virginia kids?
Yep. And this is the tough part that the principals are struggling with because we're trying to make this so it's equal among elementary schools. But we're not yet. So we're slowly working to that. But all the elementary kids should be, no matter what building you're in, you should be, they should be experiencing this, this.
Very good. Any other questions?
When will we, as school board members who wanted to be on this committee, when will we start participating or getting invited to participate in some of these discussions?
Fun part. Honestly, I think you and me with maybe Alicia Schroeder need to have a separate meeting to talk about vision and the direction we're going before the teachers come back in the fall. And this is different than another kind of meeting you talked about with the school board. I think we need to talk about the big picture, but any of these committees, yes, any board members welcome to join at any time. We'd actually love to have you there. Teachers love it when they see you. It doesn't matter where they see, they love seeing you.
I would love to attend, but I don't, I, I need to be notified of when they're happening. So if we can make sure that that happens, that would be great because I've, like I said numerous times, it's, this is something I'm really passionate about and I'd like to be a part of that.
I know. This is, I've heard you, this is in your wheelhouse.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And I have one other thing to update on, which is related to what Director Hattie had mentioned before. End of the year, where do we go? End of the year, it went really well. Your teachers did a bang-up job. And your custodians are kind of the unsung heroes. You had parents who are doing stuff, you had hundreds of people. I'm not making this up. Doing stuff that was not in their job description. They were absolutely fantastic. All the way down the line. I've heard very little problems. It was because we planned a lot of this ahead of time, but your staff, they stepped up absolutely big time. And I'm not going to say everything's Polly Annie. I'm not going to say everything's perfect and everybody's happy and everything. But in the big scheme of every, it went fairly well. A couple of things coming up. We do have a sale coming up on Thursday and Friday in the Roosevelt Gym. For people watching this also, 10 to 2 o'clock. It is excess furniture, things that we can't use. They're for sale. Uniforms, we do have some trophies. We do have desks, chairs, some old bookshelves, banisters. There'll be some cabinets that are for sale. So we do encourage the public to come and purchase and take a look at it. There will be a price on every one. It's not an auction and a first come, first served. But we'll help you. And we're hoping that that goes well. And I do got to give a shout out here. Nobody is asking me to do this. You did hire a gentleman named Tony Hattie to do certain things and remove some. I have to give, he's great. He's fantastic. I got, I hope he's watching this. Or somebody talks to this guy. I don't, he's been great. Custodians, he's worked well with custodians. He's gone above and beyond what you contracted him to do, what he said that he was going to do. He's done a super job, also involved in this. Next thing coming up, we do, we will have a sale at Gilbert. As of this minute, we're thinking that one will be the Thursday, Friday before the 4th. As of this minute, that's what we're thinking. We also will probably open the building up on probably the Saturday or Sunday and let the public go through Gilbert. We know there'll be a lot of alumni in town. We will also need to do the same for Evolith. So there probably will be a time on Saturday or Sunday. I don't know the exact time yet. We'll open it to the public. We'll just say, come on in, take, wander down the halls, go down memory lane for anyone who wants to go ahead and do that. We'll make that available. And then we'll publish those so folks can have an opportunity to participate in them also, if they wish. Any questions at that time?
Back up a little bit. So other than the, at the Roosevelt School that Hattie Enterprises contracted for, there must be other things that weren't removed, that could be removed. Does that go to the demolition contractor then for anything else that's left or what?
We sent everything through him. We did have some other individuals say that they wanted some things, like the diving board showed up. We ran everything through Tony because we put out an RFP. You did it legally and legit. You had one person who responded. He was, his was the company who responded. So we did send some other individuals through him to talk about removal and et cetera like that. So I believe you're going to have some other income coming in because they are paying you for some of the other stuff that are removed. A lot of the stuff has been removed and it's done and it will be for sale. He also, this wasn't in the RFP, but he removed a bunch of stuff, additional stuff, and moved them to the gym for the sale to the public. So the public could have an opportunity to purchase them.
Things like, I've had some inquiries about things like doors and some other things that weren't on that list. What about doors and maybe some windows and things? How is that being handled?
Be on sale for the public.
Already removed or they'd have to remove it themselves?
Already removed. They, everything is removed that is going to get removed because they are starting asbestos removal and abatement in that building. It's inaccessible now to us, Roosevelt.
But has something, have some things been removed other than what was contracted to be removed? And how would anybody, like, save doors? I've had specific things about doors that weren't, weren't removed.
Yep, that was.
There to be bought or to be sold?
They should contact Tony Hattie. If they want to buy them from him, I think he's, I, I think he might be receptive to selling some of that stuff. But they should contact him because he's the gentleman.
He had all the doors in his list? I, I don't, I didn't go over his whole list.
He removed what he said he was going to remove.
Yeah. I didn't know if that included all the doors or not. I just couldn't.
There's a bunch of doors that are still there that we can't do anything with.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Noel, is that gonna, you're going to be tearing down the old science wing in Gilbert. Is that going to go for the old gym? I mean, are they going to open that? Are they gonna, is Tony going to be contracted to do anything with the science wing that's going to be torn down? Do we know?
So I believe it would be prudent to go through the same process to see if there's some stuff in there that a company sent out another RFP. That building won't be torn down until later. So I'd like to start with the buildings and grounds of that same question. But it might be something the board will ultimately want to consider doing. So don't be surprised if that doesn't come back in July for the board meeting, for this board to talk about.
And when do they start the abatement on that building, on that?
Roosevelt?
Noel, the science wing?
Gilbert.
Oh, science wing, Gilbert.
That will start later this summer, I believe.
That's just the abatement or is that demo too?
They have to do abatement first and then the demo will start later. The demo, they want to demo the Roosevelt completely, first priority. And then they would take a look at the other one. But that would, no demo on that one. Remembering the timeline from Kraus Anderson, that's not going to start till after late fall or early fall, not till September.
Okay.
We have time to remove things from that wing.
Any other questions? Okay, so you've kind of answered 4.14, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So when you said, Noel, just, so I, I understand, the Thursday and Friday before the 4th, that would be June 30th and Friday, July 1st?
July 1st.
Okay.
Right.
For?
Gilbert.
For the Gilbert sale.
Oh, okay.
Concerned about finding workers on the actual 4th of July workers. We need some people on site. Usually want to work over the weekend.
So regarding the work that is done by our fantastic employees and cooperation and everything, I'm thinking of the maintenance staff, all the moving that they're doing. And is other maintenance or typical summer work being kind of put to the side or saved for later or what? I mean, there's a lot going on there and they're doing a lot, a lot of work.
Yep. Oh, absolutely. There is a lot going on there. In short, because Mike Hogan, we're talking almost every day about things. And we have done most of the big moving stuff now. We got stuff to Laurentian. We got stuff to Franklin. We've got all the stuff out of Roosevelt. We have most of the stuff out of the rooms in Gilbert for the upcoming sale. We have all this stuff out of the Roosevelt building. That's for sale. So what's happening now, but we also have some lawns that still need mowing. So we still are mowing the lawns because we still have to mow the lawns. Fortunately, we don't need to clean Gilbert. We don't need to clean Roosevelt. We know that the annex is coming down in a year, so we are not going to do a deep cleaning of the annex. We need those custodians elsewhere. We also have a crew of custodians who started cleaning the new high school. Our custodial crew is helping to clean the new high school and you're saving money by doing that because we're using our own employees who are excellent. And so they've started cleaning some of the weight areas in the high school that are able to get cleaned. It is such that we are ahead of schedule because everybody's pitched in so well that originally we had an agreement that if you're a custodian, can you just wait on your vacation and just wait till July to take it? So Mike Hogan and I talked today. We believe we are going to have some custodians who were going to, they'll be able to take vacations in June because we are ahead of schedule on some of our move stuff. So some of the custodial stuff, it will be, but there's a lot going on with the custodians.
So when you say the custodians are cleaning up the new high school, are they cleaning up after the contractors or the contractors cleaning up after themselves?
The contractors typically, they do some basic cleanup. But in every new building that's built, there's always a cleaning crew that always goes into the building. Usually these folks come from outside. You hire a company, they come in and clean the building. In our case, we made a decision early on that we thought we had the staff who could clean it, get it cleaned up, and it would save you some money. And so that's currently what is happening right now.
Did that happen at the new Laurentian School too? That they had to clean up after the contractors?
Different. We did bring in a crew.
I'm afraid that we're overloading our maintenance staff and with all the cleaning up after contractors and all of the heavy lifting and all of that extra plus what they are hired to do, this is all extra. I don't know if we're paying them overtime or they're doing this on their regular time?
You are overloading everybody.
Well, I'm, I'm worried about that.
Group, you're not overloading.
I'm worried about that and I don't know how fair that is. And I hope people aren't getting hurt.
But logistically, Polly, it has, it's solid, has to happen. Meaning, you mean, you have to, I mean, how else?
Not necessarily.
We could have, have, we could have hired help. I'm sorry, John.
Not necessarily. I don't know how else you could have done it. I mean, somebody, work had to get done.
Right.
We can hire help. We could hire movers. We could have hired, I guess, you know, we've got moving vans and that's extra expense. But we, we could hire extra help and, and I understand extra help was asked for and, but we are getting it, so.
Are they, are they getting paid overtime and, or flexing or?
We just simply have to pay them overtime and then they get whatever the overtime prevailing wage is in the contract.
But you know, a lot of, a lot of this moving too, it's been going on for a long time that they aren't being, they aren't doing summer maintenance and keep up. I mean, there's extra things that you always do in the summer for our existing buildings, the ones that are still operating before we get into the new buildings. And that evidently has to be put on hold. I don't know how else you can do it, so.
Some of it is on hold, but not the essential stuff that's getting on. That's why I keep saying, these are, you are, this is extraordinary what's happening here. What people are experiencing, this rarely happens in a district where there's this much movement going on because usually you're building a new building, everybody stays exactly where they are. And then only when the new building is moved, excuse me, do you move kids there. We can't do that because we need to keep this spoke moving constantly. And so that's why I say kudos to your employees. They are absolutely stepping up, but I, it's hard on them.
And has extra help been asked for or not?
From the employees.
Has extra help been asked for, for all of this extra work from anyone?
I think what I hear Polly saying is there's a concern about people burning out and being.
Out and getting hurt.
And, yeah, and getting hurt and just, you know, I think that's what I hear you saying is you're just concerned about.
I am. And, but has, has extra help been asked for and not given?
No, because Mike and I have talked quite a bit and I double-checked and talked to custodian pairs. I've talked to a lot of people in the last week and a half about how things are going. The consistent message I'm hearing is it's going well. Yes, this is hard. I can't do this. I know I can do this. I can't do this, but I know I can do this. And so, yes, we know there are some people who are probably afraid. We have to get some things done. And my overall message to you is your employees have been absolutely fantastic. The custodians specifically, they will be able to take some vacation time sooner. I think that'll help them. We're going to get through it, but yes, there are some afraid people there and we're paying attention to that. But we have to also get some things done.
And have any people been hurt?
Not to my knowledge.
Thank you, Noel.
Noel, one question, just once, excuse me, Tim, one question. So then now that we have vacated the Gilbert campus, what happens? We haven't had no discussion on that. I mean, what happens to the building once, you know, we're going to try to put up for sale? But is it, does the power stay on? Does the heat stay on? I mean, you're going to have to have fire protection. You're going to have to keep the sprinkler system wet. You know, you can't let the building freeze. I mean, I'm just trying to, what, what happens there?
All those things, the answer is yes, to all those questions you just said. We have not turned the water off. We have not turned the power off. The boilers, if they need to be, we have made them so they could be fired up again if the fall, if somebody wants to look at them. But I think this is another topic. The buildings around, starting there, we'll need to talk about that. What do we want to do with this building if it remains unsold in October, let's say? Then we'll have to make some decisions. But for right now, we're keeping everything on.
Is it, is it like going to be relisted again? I mean, since it wasn't listed properly?
Difficulty finding a broker to list it. On that specific Gilbert building, there are two different individuals who are interested in it. They're doing some background work to take a look at some reports that have been done on it to see whether it's feasible. They are not in a position where I can bring anything before you, but you do have interesting interest from two different groups on the Gilbert campus right now. And I'm hopeful one of them will pull through.
And how did we come, and how did those two become interested? Was it through Jeff?
Part of it was, I don't believe so. Part of it was word of mouth. People know the buildings are for sale. You've run ads. You've talked about this. This isn't new. A lot of people know about this. People talk to each other and you just need the right person with the right mentality and the right assets to be taking a look at that. We've had some inquiries from people. They just weren't serious and they didn't have any financial backing. Once they took a look at it, they said, you do have a couple of serious people, I believe, were looking.
You got some blueprints, didn't you, for somebody, Bill?
Yeah, for Dave. Yeah, I do. I did. He's already got them.
Okay. 6.143, Minnesota Power. Does everybody understand what that is?
I'd make a motion to accept that.
Okay, John.
Support.
Motion by John, support.
Bill?
Did you say we got a memo or something about that, John?
Yeah, there was an email saying.
We're just looking for it, but.
Send.
To the, on our.
Last night.
Yesterday.
So since we're in the discussion stage, the Virginia Public Utilities have no problems with Minnesota Power infringing on their utility by placing these or, and if these are being placed at the high school, are they for visitors or are they for employees?
I knew one of you was going to ask this question.
I mean.
At this stage, what it is, is do you want to accept a donation request? What it is, it's called a Level 2. The conduit is there. So it's going to be relatively easy to hook up. It's a Level 2, meaning if you plug in something to an outlet here, that's Level 1. Level 2, it's a plug your car in. It takes eight hours to charge. That's Level 2. That's what this is. Level 3 are those superchargers where you plug your car in and then four hours later it's fully charged. Down the road, once we have installed, it'll come back to the board here. We'll have to talk about, what do you want to do? Do you want to just provide them free or do you want to have people pay for it? You can do either way. One charging station will handle two vehicles. These two will be able to handle four vehicles and we can decide later, do we want to charge them or do it for free? Or how do we want to do that?
I mean, for, say we had four employees with electric cars, we wouldn't want them tied up all day. I'm saying versus if we had people coming up from the state, which the state of Minnesota is really pushing their electric vehicle fleet, that if we had people come up from the state, we would have to have some, something for them.
We'll have to have some rules.
Yes.
Well, it's a, you know, it's a given. It's going to cost because the district's not going to pick up the price of electricity.
Correct. Is Virginia Public Utilities going to have a problem with Minnesota Power coming in?
All they're doing is providing.
I know, but they're.
Units and it's being hooked up to Virginia Public Utilities.
So that will be a cost.
Problem solved.
So.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, I just don't want to, just don't want any problems with the Virginia Public Utilities having an issue with them coming and installing something.
They're not, they're not installing. They're, they're paying for the installation.
They shouldn't have a problem at all because they're going to get electricity business from these stations. Virginia Utilities.
Yeah.
Just asking the question.
No, I'm with, I'm with you.
Send them two thank you letters.
I think Virginia Public Utilities should be opening up a couple more charging stations, maybe.
Minnesota Power will donate up to 80% of the installation cost, up to 1,500, as well as provide two chargers and one pedestal.
One pedestal.
One pedestal, okay. So it's only two chargers and one pedestal.
That's what it says.
And 80% up to 1,500. So could it, so if it costs more than 1,500, we pay the difference?
Yes.
Okay. And I was wondering what the ongoing cost of this is going to be?
Need a policy, put a policy.
To have a policy and.
Once you, once you get it, you know.
We will have to do that, but first we need to know, do you want to?
Yes.
Do this.
I will.
Put in the cart before the horse, myself, because we don't know what the ongoing effect and cost and whatever, maybe problems with.
We know it's, it's gonna be a necessity in time, and we're, if we don't do it now, it's gonna cost more to do it later.
We don't know that, time's not here yet.
I do know.
The other, the other is that it won't cost us anything if we don't let people hook up to them. And that's when a policy will be made, and people will understand, there will be a cost exchange, so. This is just to get it there. So we have a motion by John, seconded by Bill. Is there any further discussion? With no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
On with, second voting no. So we've done 6.14, 6.2, Foster Grandparents Program.
I will not be up here for, come on up.
We gotta, we gotta put her in front, next time.
She's gonna be in front.
I know, but.
I'm going outside, staying here. Yes, she's gonna talk about the Foster Grandparent Program, we have had it before, it was in Parkview a couple years ago, so it was Rock Ridge now, so she's here to talk to you about the Foster Grandparent Program. We will bring it back to you at a later date, for you to let us know whether you would like to proceed on this or not. Take it away.
Thank you, thank you for the invitation to tonight's meeting.
Even though we put you at the end?
Yes, it was very great to be here, and this is my first time being at a school board meeting. I am a graduate of Evlith Gilbert, so I graduated in 99, and just really excited to see kind of the partnership you guys have, and just kind of learning how everything is coming together for the kids. And so, what I'm here for today is just to share information about our program, the Foster Grandparent Program. And so I did forward on some of our program materials, so just some of the basic materials that we have about the Foster Grandparent Program, and I'll just give a brief overview as well. So the Foster Grandparent Program, it's federally funded, operated through AmeriCorps Seniors, and it's also known as the Corporation for National and Community Service. And with their social service, it is one of three organizations in Minnesota that sponsors the Foster Grandparent Program. So out throughout the state, we provide volunteer opportunities for seniors 55 and older. And also, too, it is, AmeriCorps Seniors is under the umbrella with the Senior Companion Program, and the Retired and Senior Volunteer Program, which also provides volunteer work for seniors in our community. The Foster Grandparents Program, they provide one-on-one support to students in the classroom, and assist the teacher in supporting individual learning goals. One of the things that we do have, when identifying goals for students, it's called an assignment plan. And with the assignment plan, the teacher would identify which students might need a little extra support and assistance in the classroom. Volunteers can help with reading, math, assisting with staying on task and focused, providing encouragement and emotional support for students, to someone who, a student who might need a little extra, extra help, and a friend to help them facilitate their learning, and help them be more successful in school. And then also, too, with that, the Foster Grandparents, they also receive benefits from volunteering. So when people volunteer, they gain many benefits, such as improved health and wellness, reduced loneliness and isolation, and increased sense of focus, which is great for folks who are retired, and, you know, some just need that little extra support to care. So with the Foster Grandparent Program, there is a stipend, currently it is, the stipend is a non-taxable benefit that is given to the volunteer. So currently, it is $3 per hour, there is a little bump in July, July 1st, it'll be up to $3.15, so $3.15 an hour. And then also, too, our program provides transportation reimbursement, so reimbursement from the volunteer site, time off, so volunteers do accrue, we call it stipend time off, so time if they need to take time off or personal time, and ongoing training and support during their volunteer service. And then, too, we do provide access, coverage of accident and personal liability insurance while volunteering. So if a volunteer was injured while serving, they would cover most likely with their insurance, but then we also cover whatever bills and whatnot are not covered with that. When we do have a volunteer who is interested, so with our program, it's volunteers 55 and older, and an interested volunteer would contact me, so if you know of anybody who would be interested in volunteering with the Foster Grandparents or even Senior Companion Program, you can contact me, and then I would give them information, the third page of your documents that were sent, that shows the program description that we do give to the volunteers, so they have a good understanding of our program. But we do have an application for volunteers to fill out, and we ask that they provide references, we check on their references. And then, we do conduct two separate background checks, to make sure that volunteers are safe to serve children. We do the Bureau of Criminal Apprehension Check, the NSOPW, that's, the National Sex Offender Public Website Check, Minnesota State Checks, and then we do FBI fingerprint check as well, to make sure that they're safe to serve. Once an individual's background is clear, we do provide volunteer orientation, and then we also have the volunteer complete 20 hours of pre-service training. So before they're in the classroom, we do our orientation, we would meet with the teacher as well, so if there are teachers who are interested, that would be part of training, so having a tour, visiting with the teacher, making sure that it's a good match. And then, and then we also have a list of different movie or shows, and doc, well, videos, and different things like that, books to read, suggestions for online training. And then once a volunteer is trained, we do look at having them have two to four hours of volunteer service each month. And then volunteers are expected to serve 10 hours per week. During the pandemic, it was, it has been reduced to five. So we do expect volunteers to serve five hours a week right now, and eventually that will go back to 10 hours, but we're not, we haven't decided when that target date will be. But, and, let's see, what else, I'm just trying to think, with the pandemic has actually made it very challenging to find volunteers and to get into this, into schools, and we don't, I guess, looking at our, I guess, recommendations for safety in the classroom, by the time the school year would be, masks would be optional for the, for the volunteer. Currently, our volunteers do wear masks in service, and then just maintaining social distance, best, working with their kids. And I do have information, too, on the agreements, so I do have copies over here of our programs, and I can hand those out now, too. Just basically talking about the volunteer station development plan, the automatic commitment.
Thank you.
For the host site to designate a staff member to be the primary liaison between the host site and the Foster Grandparent Program, and then helping us interview and approve potential Foster Grandparent volunteers, helping with the orientation to the sites, and training of Foster Grandparent volunteers, monitoring the assessment between the volunteers and the students, and assisting foster grandparent volunteers in completing and maintaining the Foster Grandparent Program assignment plans. So that's where we're going to know which students would benefit from having a volunteer, working with them one-on-one, participating in regular scheduled training meetings with Foster Grandparent volunteers and staff, and helping to complete performance evaluations for the Foster Grandparent volunteers, so we do that on an annual basis, to make sure that they're happy, that the teachers are happy with the volunteer, and that, and everything is going well. And then, ongoing recognition of Foster Grandparent volunteers, their contributions. There are listed on here, too, so the financial commitment, so this is the part where, as the board, you'll want to kind of decide how many volunteers, how many volunteers that you would like to have, if you do choose to have Foster Grandparent volunteers. It is an annual contribution of $300 per Foster Grandparent volunteer, and that is to help with the cost of transportation, recognition, the stipend benefit, so we just ask for a small cost share. And that's typically built in February, in the spring, so. But I think as a new site, we would give you a full year to decide, you know, that it is a good fit, so that's, that's negotiable as well, but, so there's information on that. And then also, too, if the Foster Grandparent is serving over the lunch hour, providing a, which is always fun, too, a lunch buddy, or a foster grandpa, sitting. And on the second page of the document, is the understanding, so if you do choose to have Foster Grandparents with Rock Ridge and partnering with us, we would have an official MOU that we would sign, but that's just an example. Any, any questions?
Sorry.
Yeah, no problem.
Typical age group, like grades.
Grades, so I do, I don't have a lot of volunteers in North Carolina, I was counting right now, so trying to recruit, and recruit sites as well, but oftentimes, it's the younger kids, but also, too, even the older kids, so kindergarten through 5th grade, so it could be at any, any of the schools. I know with the three elementary schools, maybe proposing having one volunteer at each site, or, or more, and also, too, with the Foster Grandparents, could maybe float between classrooms, depending on their schedule and the needs of the teachers. They're pretty flexible, so it would be based on the needs.
Any other questions?
I have a question for you, Noel. How, how would what the Foster Grandparents do be different than the work of Para's Title I teachers, because it speaks about academic and, what, socially-emotional?
I think maybe the best way to think about this one is, personal opinion, if we could get a Foster Grandparent in each building, that'd be awesome, for our kids, because we've got a bunch of kids, they don't have a grandparent, they don't have a parent, so part of it, honestly, is, from the kid's point of view, if someone's coming, someone cares about them, they're looking for them, yes, there will be some instruction and tutoring goes aside, but also, but honestly, is, you know, how's it going, how's your weekend go, you know, things like that. We have a number of kids who, they don't have an adult who's asking them those questions, so it's probably, I don't want to speak for you, but what I've seen is about half and half. The, how are things going, you know, looking forward to, and then some tutoring also on the side.
Might that be a problem with, with unions, and, you know, it's almost like taking over, no?
No.
Like, like custodial, you know, somebody taking over custodial work, that could be custodians?
I think that's an issue, I think that a lot of classrooms invite the help, to help students read, or, you know, like Noel said, just, I mean, even having lunch, sitting down and having lunch with a student, I think it's a beneficial program, and I would be, I would be willing to say, like, two, I know it's hard to find people willing to do it, especially right now, but having two people per elementary, you know, K through six, I think that that would be beneficial, myself, if we can afford to do that, I mean, it seems like peanuts.
But yeah, leaving that to discussion of how many, so with our program, too, we help, you know, with the ad placement, you know, we could even collect Rock Ridge, you know, in our Slavi Tribune as well, as we're recruiting for volunteers, more focused there, possibly to, like, community education, it is something that we would move forward with, getting into a newsletter, and just sharing the word, too, so.
I just had a commenter story, my nephew just, and it is first year in kindergarten, and they had the end-of-the-year program, and all the parents came, and my mother happened to come with my nephew and my sister, and there was a couple kids that didn't have anybody there, and it was heartbreaking. And so my mom actually sat with one of the little girls, and was so excited, she was so excited to show someone her book and everything she had done throughout the year, but hearing that story just broke my heart, and I can see where there would be a need for this kind of service.
So how's it, how's it typically decided, you know, with the, with the population that we have, one per building, would the teachers, in coordination with you and your program, decide which kids would have this grandparent?
Yeah, but, um.
Or multiple, maybe different ones in different weeks?
Yeah, so I think, you know, checking in with the principal of each school, maybe them reaching out to the.
Teacher referral, maybe?
Yeah, what's that?
Teacher referral, maybe?
I think oftentimes, Polly, they sign up, they have, teachers can have a sign-up time, you know, so that.
When the kids themselves sign up?
No, the teacher would sign up for time to have the grandparent in their room, or to have the grandparent with one of their students in their class.
And they could even float around the whole class.
Floating, yeah.
Right, the whole building.
Okay.
Sharing with different teachers. And then, too, it would be for the teacher to identify those students.
Okay, and then with parental approval, I hope?
Yeah.
Yeah. But didn't Evlith Gilbert have, like, the grandparents came in already, to the Franklin to read, and, to read to the kids? I think we had something, it wasn't the foster parent, but did they still do that? I had a friend or two that did that a few years back.
Yeah, I guess I'm not, I'm not sure if they.
They still do, and they also do at Parkview, they have grandparents coming to read.
Okay.
We're invited to go and read whenever we're available, or something.
Okay, good, yeah.
Yeah. I would, I would be willing to make a motion to approve the Foster Grandparent Program for up to two volunteers per K through six site, or.
Two per building?
Two per building, yeah.
Ask where you want to put a number on it? Have 10, why not?
Well, because she specifically asked.
Financial partner.
She specifically asked in the contract for a number.
That might be a good start, I mean, we can always add more at a later date, if there's a need.
And I know, like she said, it's difficult to find people right now, but I think that, I think that would be great.
That Brandy? So we have a motion by Brandy to have two volunteers per elementary building, seconded by Director Addy. Is there any more discussion? Any more discussion? With no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kristina.
Thank you. Thank you guys, thank you for your time tonight, good to be here, and I look forward to being in touch, you know, with the, the next steps of getting connected.
Thanks for being patient.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Been waiting till the end.
Okay, 6.3-22 is FYI on the general election timeline for this coming election in November. Just had it put in so everybody kind of knows the deadlines and the dates that they have to. to sign up by. Item 7.1, vacation days of employees for discussion. Noel?
Thank you, members of the school board. I don't know how much discussion or going into the details, but we have had a request from an employee, Jeff Carey, in regards to vacation days. So what I've done is I was not there when his contract was negotiated, so I have his contract. You have his contract and you have the vacation days that he has submitted, put in. The contract that was written two years ago, when he started as director of building the girls, was very specific as far as what would happen, how many days of vacation he could roll over. So at that time, he was allowed in the new contract to roll over 20 vacation days and he just had to use them in six months. In addition to that, he had 43.5 days that he could go into an HRA. We have not done the yet, we will put those into an HRA. He also had the ability to convert, I think it was five days at the end of, by December, into an account if he wanted to. He has not asked us to do that. And so, long story short, and I'm looking at his contract, calculating his vacation time, not his sick time, his vacation time, he is out of vacation time. If he wanted to take vacation from now until the end of his contract, he is out of vacation and would need to come back to work on June 17. I do not have the authority to add vacation days to any employee other than what's in the contract, so that's why this is coming before you. He has made a request to bring this before you. And so the question before the board is, his total contract runs till the end of this month. So the question he is asking is, how many vacation days do I have? And he is under the belief that he has vacation days through the end of the month. When I look at his contract, he is out of vacation days and would have to come back to work on June 17. I'm not authorized to add vacation. I know this is an awkward topic. I'm not authorized to add vacation days. We don't have another employee where we have added vacation days too. We have some employees, they're all ASME employees, who have, because of the contract, who have rolled over some of their vacation time and they have a longer period of time to make it up. Those are ASME employees. He's not a member of ASME, he's on an individual contract, you have 12, 13, 14. So the question is before you as a board, what would you like us to do?
We received an email. Did he have vacation time, that amount of vacation time in our system where they take, you know, their PTO days or whatever? Did he have that amount of money in there and then it was taken away? Because if it was in there and it was taken away, I don't feel like that's right.
The system was wrong. The system had never been updated in his case. There was no, from the old Evelyn Gilbert contract, there was no record of how many vacation days there were, when they were taken, sick days, there was simply no record. So that system was never updated. So only because the question came up, starting about mid-May or so, when I sat down with the business office and we looked at the contract and looked at the way the contract was written, then it is true. Then we went in and changed that program, I know exactly what you're talking about, to reflect what his contract actually said.
Has he made aware that that was going to happen? Because that, again, it doesn't seem like that's fair. I mean, he had those hours in there and because our system wasn't up.
That's why we're here. The system hours were never accurate.
They do know of.
They weren't, Bill. I looked at the hours and I looked at his contract, they were not accurate.
They weren't accurate to the contract that he signed.
I don't want to argue with you. You just tell me what you want to do.
Get the guy and let him go, let him ride off into the sunset. Okay? That's what I would do. I mean, he's earned it, he's been part of this process. He's, you know, he stepped aside only to get stepped on, kind of, sorta. Okay, and we want to just let him, you know, his contract is ended, just let him ride off into the sunset peacefully. He's asked for that.
Of all our other employees, vacation is earned on a.
He's a longtime loyal employee and he didn't use his, all of his contract in all those days. I believe he had excess vacation. Maybe not to the level that was on his screen, but I believe he had, he would have had that enough to cover the end of his contract.
So we're basically talking 10 days?
10 days.
What were you going to say, Tom?
So I'm not going to argue over that. I, you know.
His contract, he actually, when he signed this, he gave up some from Evelyn and then we made, we made, there's one, one of the sections in here. We gave him like 45 days or 45 hours or whatever. We rolled some over, but there was never, and he signed it, there was never anything that came from Evelyn and sat here because that was all taken care of in the contract.
But other employees were allowed and extended a period of time to take their vacation days. And I think we should be consistent across the district, even, it was informal with ASME, it was not in their contract, it was an informal agreement, so to speak. Nothing on paper, no MOU. And I believe that if we do it to some employees, we should do it to others and let him be on vacation to ride out till June 30.
You sure it's only 10 days, Brandy?
It's 10 days. In his email, he mentioned 10 days as well. And I would be willing to make a motion to, to allow him to take those 10 days of vacation to finish out his remaining days with our district. You know, if, if it was said that, you know, Mike Hogan and Bob Voss, I believe it was, could do those job duties that he's currently doing, I don't see why they couldn't do him those 10 days.
So we have a motion by Brandy?
Support.
Support by Matt.
John.
John. I knew I was going to do that. I'm sorry, John.
Their mental block.
It's unfortunate that he didn't come to us saying that he had 200 days of vacation accumulated because you've never tracked his vacation ever in Evelyn's. It was never tracked.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there any, is there any discussion?
Do you know that, because I don't know that.
No, neither.
There's discussion when his contract was signed.
We're in discussion.
Yeah, we are in discussion, but the.
And, and I.
How can I sit here and have an argument over things?
And I would wish that it's not framed as we're adding vacation days because I don't believe that we are adding any vacation days. I think he's just getting his rightful.
Well, and like I said, I mean, if those hours were in, in the system, showing him that he had those hours, I don't, I just don't think it's right to take those hours.
Just clarify, I'm just a little bit confused by this and I never did get an email, so I don't know what you're talking about.
No, he only sent it to the Evelyn's board member.
So I guess.
I didn't look, I didn't.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I didn't look at that, I just saw the email.
What was, could you elaborate what the email said or?
So it was just basically saying that he wanted to, he wanted to use the remaining of his vacation days to carry him through the rest of his contract because he had those days. And he had hours in, banked up into the system that they use for taking their vacation days, et cetera. And they were there one day and then they were gone next. If they were there and he believed that he was entitled to those days, I just don't feel it was right to take it away.
The only thing I would say is, he couldn't have accumulated that many hours in two years.
So the discussion is, in the other part of the email said that he's looking for basically 10 days of vacation.
And Noel said, by June 17, his contract runs until June 30. So there's only 13 days there and there's, what, two, two, and so it's nine or 10 days.
You know, I guess, we'd all agree to pay it. None of us on the Virginia side of the board received that email. So this is all brand new, you know.
I have no control over that. Like I said, I didn't, I didn't even look at that. It's neither here nor there for me.
I just went back through all my emails, see if there's something I missed.
It's nine days.
Yeah. And again, you know, I mean, I think he's.
Well, I just, I'd like to give someone what they're due, of course, but I don't want to set a precedence either that this is not, we're just, you know, freely giving.
No, it's not.
I mean, I just.
It's not. He's been a loyal employee for years.
I think.
I think there's.
Yeah, everybody could be seen as loyal employees as well. But again, for me, it comes down to the fact that he had those hours in the system and he, he sent, you know, an email with, showing that.
Okay, yeah, I wish we all would have gotten that email because that maybe would have clarified it a little bit. I don't even feel comfortable putting on it.
We can't, I, you know.
No.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know if Noel got that email. Again, I didn't.
Sure he saw it eventually, because Tim knows about it.
I did see it.
Okay.
So must Tim have, so.
So you saw it, Tim?
Did I talk to?
No, you saw the email?
I, no, I did not get the email. It was.
Did you see it? It was sent to him, he said. So I made, I made a motion and supported.
And seconded by.
I.
Now I got everybody.
I'm going to change the.
Sorry.
Yeah, I'll get some first national.
Sorry.
There you go.
Is there any other discussion?
Oh, gosh.
With no further discussion, favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
You're abstaining?
Yes.
Okay. And you were?
I'm abst, I'm not abstaining, I'm voting yes.
Okay, very good. So we had.
I'm not going to argue over.
6-1 with one abstention. We got 7.2. It comes down to him seven days.
Yep.
No.
Whatever you want to do.
I think Polly had a clarification that that's not, that's not how we want it to be, that we're not giving him seven days.
Yeah, any days.
Consider approval of MOUs between Education Minnesota, Rock Ridge, and the Rock Ridge School District. And these were all.
Sold.
We have a motion by Tom.
Support.
Support by Brandy. These were all MOUs that were done during the negotiations.
So I can understand, are we in discussion now?
Mm-hmm.
I can understand that there were some complications and these are just trying to settle and work out those complications between the two contracts. And they seem reasonable and now I'm understanding why they're MOUs and not in the contract because then they're just once and done type of a thing and it's not going to be a problem ongoing. The only one that I had a question about was the second one, about future funding increases. Almost 40% of any additional revenue and the district would get the rest. That one is an unusual one.
But the reason why that was is that Education Minnesota's been lobbying for this money and they wanted 100%, we said no. And so we sat down with them and we said, we would like all of that to come into the school, not all of it, a portion of that. And we finally came down to 60% will come back to the school for everyone and they would retain 40%.
Yeah, wow.
Because their union was, brought this to the state and, and it hasn't been passed by.
It died legislation?
It might, it may die in legislation. If it does, then just a MOU.
So how far into the future does this funding increase go? Is it just one?
One shot.
One shot, yeah.
One shot?
Yeah. It's just, it's to bring consolidation in line with anything else that's gone up with inflation.
What this one is, members of the board, is very specific. Anytime the district consolidates, you get X number of dollars per student, up to 1,500 students. That formula has not been changed since 19.
90.
94?
Yeah.
A long time, in other words. So Ed Minnesota has been pushing to change the formula, bring it up to inflationary levels. This MOU, MOU says, only if that legislation passes and only on the consolidation revenue, if that happens, this is what would happen, if it's split up essentially.
So I understand that and I understand the old legislation and the new legislation, but two things. So when you get money for consolidation, it's for many, many things. It's not just for salaries, it's not just for teacher salaries. So first of all, nothing against teachers, I always support teachers, but what about our other employees district? They may not have, I don't care if they forwarded it or not, or they generated this legislation. I don't think they specifically did, they might have supported it, but I know, I've read different school districts in, in different versions that have introduced this into the legislature, legislation, at least five different, and our district was one of them and you spoke at the legislature in support of this. So first of all, I'm not keen on giving any percentage just to the teachers only, again, because it's to be used for a myriad of things, not just salaries. And, you know, 40%, 60%, that, I don't know. We should decide as a board how we are going to get this, how we're going to use this, this individual, this extra money. So this is really odd, strange and I.
But you have, but you have Education Minnesota lobbying for money, then they'll have to share with ASME, what you're saying?
They're not just lobbying for this, Bill. This is, this is money that any consolidated school district gets. And we got a certain amount, we got about 450 and then 550, about a million together. They want to raise it to an extra amount, but that's for everything. That's for uniforms, that's for textbooks, aligning textbooks, that's for all kinds of alignments. And then just to say, give away 40% of it to salaries only, I don't care if you said salaries for the whole district. I, I don't know, this totally surprised me, never heard of it before. And I would support all the other ones except for this one. I don't know what kind of agreements might have been made or not been made, but when it comes to the full board.
Was it an agreement?
It was part, part of our negotiation. So is there any other discussion?
No, it's coming to us separately now as an MOU. So you might have talked about it, but it's separate from the, from the contract and we need to discuss it and decide if we think this part is right or not.
Is there any other discussion?
I'll make a, did somebody make a motion already?
We already have a motion.
All three of them? I'll forward an amendment for, for all of them, except the second.
Favor signify by saying aye.
I forward an amendment to the motion, Tim. You have to address my amendment to the motion, whether it gets support or not, you know.
Okay, Polly, what's your?
My amendment is, I support these MOUs except the second one about the percentage increase, that we eliminate that one.
Is there support? Is there support for Polly's amendment failed due to no support?
So we continue with.
So now we have.
The regular motion.
Tom and Brandy's motion to adopt all four of these. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
6-1 with voting no. Consider approval of an offer by West 40 RV Park and Camp Brown to purchase the Gilbert School campus flagpole for $250 to be reused as a historic feature item at West 40 RV Park and Camp Brown.
I just, I just have a question and maybe nobody has this answer, but was that ever donated by the VFW?
I would, I would look into that.
I don't know if that was ever donated or not, but I mean, the VFW has their flagpole down there. I'd, I'd be willing to, I would be willing to make a motion to accept.
Contingent.
Contingent that there isn't. Contingent that there isn't, that it wasn't donated by the VFW and that the VFW doesn't have an issue with it.
Okay. I'll support that.
So we have a motion by Brandy, seconded by Bill to approve this contingent on finding out if the...
Gilbert VFW?
It's a VFW.
It was donated by...
Any other strings attached to it?
Donated.
If it was donated by someone.
Donated or if they have...
I just want to make sure that they don't have an issue that it's...
If they have an issue with what we're doing, okay. Any other discussion?
How long has that flagpole been there? Just a guess.
Well, there was two of them at one time, I believe. There was one in front of the high school and there was one in the elementary.
Yeah. I mean, I remember, I remember the Virginia Fire Department had come and take ours, the one down in front of the technical building because it started to rot, it was rotting so bad. And that was a half a dozen years ago.
Hmm.
Okay, no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Consider approval of agreement between Faith Baptist Bible College and Rock Ridge for placement of a teacher, education students.
I'll move to...
We have a motion by Bill.
Support.
Support by John.
Matt.
No, no, it's John. He's bigger than me. I have to do a lot of apologizing. Is there any discussion?
What is that for? What's...
Student/teacher.
Wait, what, what, no?
Student/teacher. Correct, Noel?
Correct.
Yeah. Is there any other discussion? With no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Carried unanimously. Meeting announcements. There will be a working session on Monday, June 27th at 5:00 PM. The school board will be touring the Rock Ridge High School. The next regular board meeting will be Monday, June 27th at 6:00 PM here at the Rock Ridge Academy Building. Your motion for...
I know that I should have, not be a time, but can I do a shout out?
Yeah, I'll support that.
Okay. I just wanted to give a shout out to the parents of, you know, the class of 2022, at Evolus Gilbert specifically because I helped with the all night grad party, but those kids were so clean and so well behaved and respectful that when the, the actual party was done, it took 15 minutes to clean up. And they got compliments from the custodian at the school because of that fact. Like he said, he could walk out and just close the door, that's how clean they were.
Very good. Good, good shout out.
Can I do one shout out too? I actually have two really quick ones because I was part of the all night grad party too on the Virginia side and those kids were amazingly well behaved too and it was a huge success and the parents put in so much time and effort and it just was a wonderful event. So thank you for that too. Also, I just wanted to thank really fast, Tim and Wendy, who is on our maintenance in Virginia. And I had a friend who had a son who graduated, her mother-in-law had lost a tennis bracelet and it was very special to her, very expensive, and they went out of their way to help them find it and they found it, unbelievably so. So thank you to Wendy and I'm sure there was other maintenance too, I just don't know their names, but Wendy was amazing and Tim as well.
Good guy, Tim.
Right.
He's pretty great too.
Yeah. I told, when I got there, they had, I told them I'd be there at 9 o'clock and when I got there, they, Wendy saw him. She let him in, so I tried to find him in the, and they said, well, we looked, we didn't find it. And I said, well, you've got Wendy, she, you got all the luck you need right there with you. And they laughed and then, so I went out in the parking lot where they parked behind, by the old railroad track and then I followed them and, and about 20 minutes later, I get a, a text message that we found it, we went in at a different door and...
There it was.
And there it was, on the floor, so...
It was pretty amazing. Yeah.
Very good. Is there a motion?
Turn.
Motion by Brandy.
Support.
Support by John. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carried. You know...